Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, March 9th, meeting of the Lincoln City Council. And I want to say, let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under a third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And I believe this evening we have time after our meeting for public comment. And will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, just a reminder, we ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 3.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, we can move on.
Vote on these items. Items 1A through H were introduced by Shob.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Items 1I and 2A and B were introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second. Introduced by Ward, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then, our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 4A and B together. They are the application of Blown LLC, doing business as Blown, for a Class I liquor license at 2901 Pine Lake Road, Suite C, and the related manager application. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
I'm Michelle Hobbs, 2901 Pine Lake Road, Suite C.
Thank you for coming. Please tell us a little bit about your application.
I own a salon. We're a blow-dry bar. So that means we don't cut or color hair, we just style. And we'd just like to offer our guests a glass of wine, or maybe for a wedding party, or something along those lines.
Okay. Are there any questions?
And you'll be charging for the wine?
Yes.
Will it be wine only, or you have wine and beer?
Wine and beer, or the seltzer waters, or this...yeah.
I have a question. Sure. And are you prepared to...I mean, will all of you, your stylists, yourself, be getting the food handlers permits as well?
Everyone will, yes.
And following state sanitation standards?
Of course.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify on this item? Thank you. We will go on to the next.
All right. Next are items 4C and D, application of Rude Abegas LLC, doing business as Rude Abegas Comfort Food, for a Class CK liquor license at 1434 O Street, and the related manager application.
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Sarah Brown, 5315 N Street.
Welcome, Ms. Brown. Tell us a little bit about your application.
Yes, so I own a plant-based comfort food business. We've been serving food since September, and the old Spaghetti Works building downtown have secured a new space, 1434 O Street, and would like to provide alcohol at our new space.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir.
When will you be open at the new space?
Mid-April.
And so you said plant-based menu? Can you tell us a little...a few things on the menu? Not because I'm hungry, but I think everybody in the audience wants to know.
I will invite everyone to come have dinner with me tonight. So comfort food dishes, burgers, nachos, mac and cheese, things like that. No animal products whatsoever.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You had already started. You're probably going to ask my question. Keep going.
I wanted to know if this is a second location or a change of location?
Change of location. One and only.
And my question is, for those of us who are directionally challenged, can you give me a reference point on that side of the street? Where a building you'll be next to, or someplace I can find it easily?
So right next to Junction and the brass rail. It's the Old Lazaris.
Old Lazaris is the one I was looking for.
Yep, you got it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Terrific. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
All right. Next are items 4E and F, application of Ann's Nail Spa LLC, doing business as Ann's Nail Spa, for a Class I liquor license at 4333 South 70th Street, Suite 6, and the related manager application. Do you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Anna Tran, at NL 4333, South 70th Street.
Okay.
Tony Ten, same address.
Okay. Very good.
Welcome to you both. Can you tell us a little bit about the application?
Yes. Her nail salon has been open for like, what, over 11 years? She's in the process of renovating it, and to provide a better facility. And we figure, you know, we might as well provide additional service, you know, for the public, or for her clients.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes.
I would ask the same question that Councilman Christensen asked earlier. Will this be for sale? Will the alcohol you serve be for sale, or is it...
Well, originally, we figured it's just going to be like, part of a package, you know, offered at the salon. But then, you know, I mean, we may be open to like, you know, because if somebody come in and they don't want the package with the alcohol, and they want to, you know, have a glass of wine, you know, I mean, what do you do? Tell them no? So we figure, you know, it's a possibility, but yes.
And are you prepared to get your food handlers permits? You're set up for that?
She already have it.
Great. Thank you.
But I guess, will the other staff at the facility also get...
Trained.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Just show me my hand. Just hold on for a second. I was just trying to figure out which building they were in. Okay. I found it.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Thank you both very much for coming down.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move approval of items 4A through F.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then, our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is approving amendments to the City-County Common Bylaws.
Judge Patrick, City Attorney. This is before you. This was proposed, I think, and discussed at your last comments meeting. Just makes a couple of simple changes. One of them is allowing future changes in the Commons Bylaws to be adopted by the Commons as a body, rather than to come back to the County Board and the City Council. The other would be to specify the meetings are quarterly, rather than monthly, since I think the Commons has essentially been meeting more quarterly than monthly in the recent past. And if you need to schedule more meetings, you'll have the option to do that.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? We can move on.
All right. Next is item 5B, Appeal of David Fiala of the Planning Commission's Approval of Administrative Amendment 19070, approving the amendment to revise the land use and floor area on property generally located at South 87th Street and Highway 2.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. Danae Kalkowski, I'm appearing today on behalf of Iger Corp., the owner of the lot that's the subject to this appeal. And also with me today is Barry Fowler. I'm going to just give a little introduction, and then let Barry talk to you a little bit about Gotcha Covered and the use that they have proposed there on that lot. So the item before you today is an appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of an Administrative Amendment that was approved by the Planning Director back on December 19th. Changes the use of Lot 3, Block 1, from automotive care center to a furniture store and warehouse on the land use trip table. And it's all to accommodate the Gotcha Covered business. So the lot in question is the small lot here, and then the administrative amendment just changed the numbers on the table and the proposed uses. Last week, we discussed the history of development of this area, and how, as a result of having trip caps in the annexation agreement for 84th and Highway 2, we came to have these land use and trip tables on the use permits and the special permits, both north and south of Highway 2. It was a way to keep track of trips and make sure we didn't exceed that trip cap that was in the annexation agreement. I think the staff report indicated that this use permit on the south side has been administratively amended over 17 times previously. Last Monday, you approved an amendment to the annexation agreement that removed the trip cap from the annexation agreement. And then subsequently, on Wednesday, the Planning Commission approved the removal of the tables from both the use permit and the special permit on the south side. However, that Planning Commission approval will not be formal until the appeal period has expired, and that's not happened yet. So we feel like we need to come forward and get the actual approval of this administrative amendment, so Mr. Fowler can go get a building permit for his lot, since it's been held up basically since December. We also discussed last week, sort of, the methodology for filling out this table is basically based upon the methodology that was set forth in the traffic studies, which form the basis of the trip caps. We determine a use category from that Sixth Edition ITE manual, taking what we know today and aligning it as closely as we can to a use category that's within that book. And then we use the trip rate based upon the same trip rates that the traffic study would have used to come up with the numbers for the annexation agreement. So based upon this, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Fowler give you a description of his business. And I think that's going to show you why we think the furniture store and warehouse uses that we've shown as uses under the ITE manual are appropriate for the business that Mr. Fowler plans to use there, and why the Planning Director felt it was appropriate, and also the Planning Commission. So I'll let Mr. Fowler talk to you a little bit about his business, and then we'll both be available for any questions you might have.
Welcome, Mr. Fowler.
My name is Barry Fowler. My address is 3800 Old Cheney Road, Suite A. The building we're going to be occupying will be a single-use building, meaning we will be the only business inside of that building. We'll occupy the entire space. Our business is primarily where we have a showroom where clients can come in and make selections for products. What we have are samples of tile, we have samples of flooring, we have samples of furniture, we have samples of fabrics. We, basically, anything for the inside of someone's home, we have the capacity to design, build those, you know, so for kitchen remodel or something like that. But the clients will come in, make their selections, will order the product in, and then install the product once it comes in. But we don't inventory, because everything that we do is much, you know, basically made to order, as opposed to something where they're just going to come in, pick it up, and walk out with it.
Interesting concept.
Maybe just two follow-up points to Mr. Fowler. I think in the appeal, there have been two different uses that were alleged to be more appropriate. I think the first one, back at Planning Commission, was a home improvement superstore. That clearly, size-wise, doesn't fit with the 12,000-square-foot building that Mr. Fowler's planned. And I think in the most recent appeal to you, it was suggested that specialty retail be a more appropriate use. And we do use specialty retail. We use that when we have a strip center that's going to have multiple uses in it that we don't know what the specific user is going to be. In this case, it's a one-user building, and we have the luxury of knowing the specific uses. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? No? Thank you both very much for coming down. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on.
That concludes our public hearing on resolutions, so we can act on these items. Item 5A was amendment to the City-County Common Bylaws, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Then item 5B is the Appeal of Administrative Amendment 19070, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by Christensen. Yes.
I would like to have a staff question with our city attorney, just to clarify for everyone up here, what it is we're voting on. Or Tim C.., come on up.
Tim C.., come on down.
Is my understanding that a yes vote on this item upholds what the recommendation was from the Planning Commission and the Planning Department?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
I think we're... Is everyone clear on that? Yes. Oh, what?
So a yes vote on his appeal?
Yeah. No, but yes vote.
It puts the issue in front of us as if it never happened anywhere else.
Right. This is as if it's a new application before the council.
If a yes vote is approving the application of Mr. Fowler, so he can go on.
Yes.
Oh, this is the application.
Okay. Terrific. I think we can call a roll.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then, our public hearing ordinance is second reading. Items 6A and B are amending the pay schedule for the employee group, whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter E by creating the classification of human resources specialist. And item 6B is amending the pay schedule for E classifications to delete the classifications of compensation technician 1, compensation technician 2, employment technician 1, and employment technician 2.
Good afternoon, Council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. 6A establishes a new classification in the Human Resources Department of Human Resource Specialist. It's been through Personnel Board and approved, so we present it to you. It'll be in an E15 pay range, which is $62,005.97 to $79,090.9. Basically, it just replaces other classifications as I move away from specialist to generalist in the Human Resources Department for cross-training and backup support. The other resolution, 6B, eliminates those other classes in which this replaces.
Are there any questions for Mr. McDaniel? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on either 6A or 6B? Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'll call items 6C through G together. We have annexation 19011 to annex approximately 10.55 acres of property generally located at Northwest 56th and West Holdridge Streets. Change of zone 07063D for a change from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential Planned Unit Development on property generally located at Northwest 56th and West Holdridge. Annexation 2003 to annex approximately 71.83 acres of property generally located at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge. Change of zone 07063E for a change from AG Agricultural and H3 Planned Unit Development to R3 Planned Unit Development with updates to site layout on property generally located at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge. And approving amendment number 1 to the I-80 West Lincoln Business Center Conditional Annexation Zoning Agreement between the City Ringneck Development LLC and Lincoln Public Schools to purchase and develop approximately 118.60 acres for a future public school site on property generally located at Northwest 48th and I-80.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. Danae Kalkowski, appearing this afternoon on behalf of Ringneck Development, owner and developer of the I-80 West Lincoln Business Center. Also here today with me is Brad Marshall from Olson, so he'll be available for any In 2011, the City Council approved the I-80 West Lincoln Business Center Planned Unit Development and the I-80 West Lincoln Business Center Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement. Covered the area shown on the map here, basically extending from Northwest 48th Street all the way over to Northwest 56th Street. Here's West Holdridge, so we have the area north of West Holdridge, all the way down to where future was Vine, and then down to I-80 on the western part of the site. The annexation agreement, as in several others we've done, master-planned the infrastructure, sewer, water, roads for the development of the entire site, but anticipated that we would zone and annex in phases as users came forward, and also provide additional PUD plan details as we had additional users come forward. The existing plan that we had approved called for basically residential and some neighborhood commercial uses, neighborhood commercial uses, H3 commercial uses, and then some residential. A portion of the site, the PUD area now, has been identified by Lincoln Public Schools for a Northwest high school site and is under contract with LPS. The five items you have before you today are necessarily...are necessary to accommodate the proposed school site, as well as the future development of the remainder of the property that will be under Ringneck ownership. We have two changes of zones and two annexations as part of these applications. The first one is basically north of Holdridge Street and just along Northwest 56th Street. It's the area, basically, that remains of the Ringneck property on the north side that just hasn't been annexed or zoned yet. It'll be residential use, but it just finishes filling out that area over to Northwest 56th The second change of zone and annexation request is for the area of the school site, so we're on the west side of Northwest 48th Street and south of Holdridge Street. It leaves the area...it's not annexing all the way over to Northwest 56th Street. But that includes both the annexation and change of zone from AG to the R3 PUD. As part of that change of zone application, we also are including additional details for the PUD site plan. Continues to show residential use on the north side of Holdridge. You'll see where the main change is, is basically the school site, shown right now for the actual school site. Right now, there's some residential density that's designated for this area, but there's no real identified use for that area at this time. That would be identified by LPS in the future. And then, to the south of where Vine Street will be, this remains Ringneck property, and is still shown for up to 401,000 square feet of commercial use in an H3 PUD zone. And then our final application really is an amendment to the use...excuse me, to the annexation agreement. It now identifies infrastructure that's already been completed out here. Back in 2001, when the annexation agreement was done, we didn't have Northwest 48th Street completed. So there's been a lot of the infrastructure that was identified in that original agreement that's been completed. So the amendment, basically based upon a new traffic study, that's been done to account for traffic that'll be utilized with the school site and with the commercial development. We identify the road improvements that are necessary to accommodate that traffic, and then how that cost will be split. This area's been master-planned for urban development since 2001, and the infrastructure investments and growth in the area have continued to occur over that time period. Changes being requested today are in conformance with the comp plan. The changes will provide additional public and private services to this area. We've had multiple meetings, as you might imagine, over the last several months with the city staff, LPS, Ringneck representatives, and we've been able to work out all of the details for both the PUD and the amendment to the annexation agreement. Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to approve the applications. We're asking for your approval today, and Brad and I will be happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
Lucas Way.
Richard.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Is there any reasons the LPS does not want to annex all the property that they're purchasing?
So the area that's not being annexed is basically the area to the west of a drainage way. There's a drainage way that extends... There's a drainage way that extends down through the site. At this stage, I don't believe the high school plan involved any portion of that site to the west of the drainage area, since it's not known really what the final use of that area might be. I think their desire is to wait and do the annexation and zoning and address improvements to Northwest Fifty-S sixth Street at such time as they know when those uses, what they might be.
So they don't have any plans for that ground?
I'm aware of specifically.
At this point? Okay, well, if we go ahead and annex both north and south and everything around that, it will kind of be a little island in there, there won't be annexed. If we annex south of Vine and north of Holdridge.
Right. But right, yeah, right now, this area is not being annexed or zoned.
Correct.
So it will be as we come in with development and work our way over to the west.
So Vine Street will not go through at this point?
No, Vine Street will just be constructed to get access.
And Holdridge will go all the way over to Fifty-S sixth Street.
Holdridge will be improved all the way over to Northwest Fifty-S sixth.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay, we can move on.
That concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session. Ordinance's Third Reading. Item 7A, change of zone 19003, application of home-based storage for a change from AG Agriculture to H4 General Commercial on property generally located at seventy-four eighty North Fifty-S sixth Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by McGinnis, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward, yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 7B is change of zone 06063B, as in Boy, application of Applesway LLC to adjust the zoning line between the B2 Plan Neighborhood Business District Planned Unit Development and R3 Residential Planned Unit Development Districts, convert office and commercial lots to attached single-family lots, and approval of a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning and subdivision ordinances on property generally located at eighty-fourth and Adam Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Washington.
And I have an amendment, I would like to amend Bill twenty-fourteen in the following manner, so on page six.
Oh, is there a second?
Oops, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Yes, seconded by Christensen.
On page six, lines thirteen through nineteen, strike paragraphs D and E and re-letter the remaining paragraphs accordingly.
Just one moment, can we have a minute?
Yeah.
I have not read this.
And, James, could you describe what it does by removing sections D and E?
Yeah, so, right now, it would remove the requirement to have pedestrian easement in that development that's going in, in the North Forty neighborhood.
So, just to clarify, this is the sidewalk we were talking about last week?
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, while Councilman Washington's reviewing, might I have some staff questions answered?
Certainly, yes.
Planning, yes.
Patrick, or Tim C., or David, or all three?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I was looking at Mr. Carey, but he wasn't getting my telepathic.
David Carey, Director of Planning, I apologize for my inability to read you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Carey, for coming forward. I understand what Councilman Bowers is trying to do, we had residents come forward and say that they were uncomfortable with the sidewalk. Why is the sidewalk originally proposed? Tell us about what's going on here.
Yeah, so the sidewalk is, for quite a while now, historically speaking, we are providing these types of pedestrian easements and connections in general in many, many different neighborhoods, so this is not atypical whatsoever. I would say that the Planning Department is in support of keeping the sidewalk in, that that is one of those situations where we feel like that the location of that sidewalk was adjusted through the process of negotiating where it would be located and how it would be used. So what has been put forth to you for action is a location that we feel works for the benefit of the reason why we would do a pedestrian easement in the first place, as well as removing the immediacy of the location from the lot that is in question as much as possible while still having a connection. I would note that the location of it is still about thirty feet away from the property line, which is quite a distance. We understand that there is concern about the activity on that, but in our opinion, in our policy position on these pedestrian access easements, that it is not, it is not that big of a negative on any particular property owner. So that is where we stand on that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Sandra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carey, if the, I understand, I think we're, Councilman Bowers is going with, listening to the neighbors, saying that they didn't want a sidewalk, my concern is that the sidewalk, the people who are speaking now are the people who live there now, not the people who will be moving in and buying lots and building homes there. And if the easement is not even available, is there any point in the future where they could realize a sidewalk would be beneficial, but we don't have an easement? I mean, does, can we not build the sidewalk and retain the easement?
I think, just to reiterate maybe what you're asking, just so I have it clear, you're saying that we would obtain an easement but not construct the sidewalk, is that what you're saying? I think procedurally and legally, I think that's, that can be done. I think the complex, the challenge there is that we normally would have the installation of the improvement happen at the time of the development, so that it is more clear-cut about who is responsible, I believe, and I would ask law to, can maybe consider this as we're standing here, but an agreement probably could be put together for not constructing the sidewalk, but still retaining the cost of the sidewalk. Having said that, though, then it kind of begs the question of, if you're requiring the improvement to happen and paying for it upfront, but not installing it, then I think you're not installing it and taking away from the community benefit that would be there otherwise.
Right, I wouldn't have them install it or leave the money on the table, I would probably leave the easement there in case it needed to be built at some point for public safety reasons, but then the onus of paying for that is treated like other sidewalks in neighborhoods where the, the cost moves to the neighbors, not to the developer. I'm just trying to, I understand they don't want the sidewalk, but I understand that those sidewalks are put in for public safety reasons and for ease of pedestrian transportation.
I would recommend standing here right now that we should install the sidewalk as would be normal in our process, but it's your decision.
David, I have a question, you know, I heard one compromise talked about putting up a fence on one side of the sidewalk that would be closest to the neighbors that are currently occupying those homes, as a compromise, is that, has that ever been requested of the developer as they put in the sidewalk to accommodate some of the concerns that some of the neighbors had expressed? Can that be a conditional requirement that we establish to build a fence on that one side that is closest to the neighbors with the concern?
I think that.
On part of the sidewalk?
Generally speaking, I think some ideas have been put on the table, I think some screenings, some plantings were discussed at the Planning Commission as well, but none of that has been put forward as far as a potential compromise slash agreement to move forward with. I think that type of a request would need to be asked of the applicant to see if there was any of that. As far as I'm concerned, that hasn't been more formally requested, so I think that if that is of interest of the council, I think that needs to be pursued a little bit without, without having the applicant and the developer to be able to respond to that. I don't, I can't respond for them right now.
So I guess we would, instead of voting right now, we would need to maybe request a delay of one week, or?
If that's of interest and is something that you want to try to work on, I think that's what you would need to do, because I don't, I can't stand here and say that I know that they would be in support of that or not.
Is there any questions for David or Law? Okay, is there any other discussion on this before we vote?
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make one, you know, I do support the Planning Department and the Planning Commission's decision to go forward in building a sidewalk. I just see other future development, it's easier to request a waiver and not put in a sidewalk without knowing what the future residents might like and appreciate. Certainly, I appreciated the connectivity to some of the closer bike trails and the routes that those individuals would have to take, and I think that fits in well with the comprehensive plan. We want to encourage this type of pedestrian mobility and activity and livability of our neighborhoods, so I, as much as I respect your efforts to work with the neighbors, I am not going to support this amendment to remove the sidewalk.
Can I?
Sure.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. When this went in, the neighbors weren't pushing back on more units going into their neighborhood, they didn't come with a long list of demands. People in Northeast Lincoln elected me to advocate for them, and this is not an unrealistic thing to provide for them, and I think it's important that we as a city be flexible with neighbors and as we continue to build, and that's why I introduced it, is we need to make sure that we listen to our neighborhoods and make sure that we are flexible and reactive to their needs.
Okay, thank you very much, please call the roll. All right.
We're voting on the amendment.
On the amendment, who strike D and E from what is before us?
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Shob?
No.
Motion carried, four to three.
Now the amended motion?
Now the main motion.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Item 7C is change of zone 19034, application of Kruger Holding Company LLC for a change from AG Agricultural NP Public Use to R3 Residential and O3 Office District on property generally located at South Eighty-Fourth and Rockaby Road, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 7D is use permit 19023, this is the application of Kruger Holding Company to allow up to forty-five thousand square feet of office space or up to one hundred twenty-eight dwelling units in the O3 Office Park with waivers for height and setbacks at South Eighty-Fourth and Rockaby, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Shob, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 7E is change of zone 19026, application of the eighty-eight oh one LLC for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential and from AG Agricultural to R5 Residential, both on portions of property generally located at eighty-eight zero one Holdridge Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Excuse me, Teresa, I need to recuse myself on this matter.
Okay.
And I'm going to turn it over to Richard, and I think he heard.
Thank you. We have a motion in front of the table, it's been, you move by Mr. Christensen, seconded by myself.
And then I would like to make, I would like to delay this for one week. Thank you to Sunrise Estates for all your hard work in getting our voice heard, and as we continue to figure out some of the details, I would ask the rest of the council to indulge me in delaying this for one week.
Second. It's been moved to delay for one week, and a second by Mr. Christensen. Yes, Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, there are about two, three, two items? I'm looking at all the, there are two items, are we delaying both of them, or just?
I think we need to move to delay both of them.
Yes. We need a motion to move them all, or they were called together?
Yeah, let me call 7F then, conditional zoning agreement with Houssman for property located at eighty-eight oh one Holdridge Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Then we can go ahead and.
And then I would.
Second, I'll second.
Moved and seconded?
And then I would ask that we delay it for a week as we continue to hammer out some stuff.
And that would be 7F also, right?
Correct.
7E and F.
And F.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we delay 7E and F for one week? Any other comments, yes?
I think this is a reasonable approach, that when there, things are still up in the air, to delay makes good sense to give people involved an opportunity to get things worked out.
To sit around the table and talk to each other.
Yep.
And I know that this isn't ideal, so I appreciate the council indulging me in delaying this for a week.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The call. Chairman to get back, Chairwoman? So you're going to sit it out next week? I'm turning the chair back over to Councilperson.
Okay, thank you.
Raybold?
We're on to the next one.
All right, 7G, street and alley vacation 19005, application of Hilltop Foundation to vacate the east-west alley adjacent to property generally located at twenty-two thirty-four Holdridge Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 7H, street name change 19003, application of Hilltop Foundation to rename Hilltop Road as Hilltop Place, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, item 7I. This is approving the Campion redevelopment agreement between M Street Development LLC, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Campion Development LLC, and the city relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located at three twenty-two South Ninth Street, three twenty-four South Ninth Street, three fifteen South Tenth Street, nine hundred L Street, and nine twenty-seven M Street, and associated rights of way on Ninth, Tenth, L, and M Streets, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward, any discussion? Right.
This is a good thing for our city to see this kind of investment going where it's going.
In that block.
In that block, it's a big improvement.
Any other thoughts? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 7J is amending the fiscal year nineteen-twenty CIP to authorize and appropriate five and a half million in TIF funds for the Campion Housing redevelopment project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward, any discussion? Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate you recognizing me. These are, the next two after this one are all tied together to one project on that block that Ward just mentioned earlier, and it is a blighted block, and I'm excited someone wants to invest in our community. But like all of us, I am a representative of the community, and I've spoke with members of the community, and we've had a ongoing conversation about affordable housing and the use of TIF, and I'd like to represent some of my constituents in saying that we really would like this to have been residential housing, we don't want to stop the development because it's been a good thing, but we'd also like to encourage the Planning Department, of the community. And we've had a ongoing conversation about affordable housing and the use of TIF. And I'd like to represent some of my constituents in saying that we really would like this to have been residential housing. We don't want to stop the development because it's been a good thing, but we'd also like to encourage the Planning Department, future developers, and this commission, this council, to look at how we use TIF and how we encourage housing in the future. Having said that, I'm going to vote no on this item.
Okay, thank you. James?
I would agree with Councilman Schob. When we look at using TIF to improve our community, it's used as an incentive. I appreciate someone wanting to come in and redevelop that block. But as I go through and I talk to different stakeholders, and I look at the numbers, and knowing that UNL has decreasing, has had a lower student enrollment, knowing that some of these other housing complexes for students are anywhere between eighty-two percent on up, I wonder if they're completely filled up. I'm worried that students are going to be paying for this with student loans. And I would like to incentivize affordable housing, so students don't have to take out student loans in order to pay for their residential where they live at. We could also look at improving senior housing as our community continues to have an aging demographic. We need to be very aware of how we can plan for that. And so I'm not going to be supportive of using TIF for this project.
Right.
Well, I'd like to point out that what's in front of us is not an either or as far as what type of housing. It's either we redevelop this block with this project, or we do not. It's not voting no on this will not improve anything and leave us with a block that is not developed, not improved, and a blight on our downtown area. So I'm going to support it.
Any other, Richard?
Yeah, I'd like to have Dan Marvin come up here real quick. So I understand these are developer bonds, and these are not city bonds, so the developer will be taking the risk. And you've kind of explained in the past that if we use small TIF funds, those are usually owned by the city.
Correct.
So...
So the developer in this case will be taking out developer purchase TIF, which means they will be going to a bank. The increment that comes off of the property tax revenue will then be pledged to pay down the debt that the developer would get from the bank. They would also be, in all likelihood, because this would be an agreement between the developer and the bank, but in all likelihood, they would be pledging beyond just those revenues. They would have to take out a guarantee on that loan. And with those funds, they will then be using them to do the sidewalk improvements, the streetscape improvements, moving the sewer line, the facade, and all the other identified items on the redevelopment agreement.
On the redevelopment agreement, you showed the TIF zone going up 9th and 10th Street, all the way to O Street. That would be contemplated if there's funds available?
So what the, what we went and told the developer is that we would like to be able to improve the walkways between M Street and O Street. There are no pedestrian lights between, in that corridor. There are bump outs that we would like to be able to install, not to constrain or eliminate driving lanes, but to make it easier for people to cross shorter distance, be able to cross the walkways. And we had to make estimates on what some of those costs were. And bump outs, we estimated about eighty thousand dollars. And the pedestrian lightings that we have identified would be comparable to what we've done over in 11th Street. That project was a three hundred thousand dollar project. So we think we can make improvements to the corridor, make it easier for people to get around. And the other thing that, as far as corridors, is it was originally envisioned that the way that we would build out M Street and make sidewalk improvements there were through projects like this, so that they would generate the increment to be able to do the sidewalk improvements through the corridor.
So if we did not do TIF, we would not need a redevelopment agreement? So the owner, if they did it without TIF, would be able to not improve or have to improve the streets or the area, or...
They would have to go to the minimum design standard.
Okay.
And so anytime you see anything in a redevelopment agreement, for instance, I know there was a discussion about energy efficiencies. So energy efficiencies, there are codes within our, within the city, and the expectation of the efficiency of that building would be that it would be built to building code. There's a line item on there of four hundred thousand dollars for energy efficiency. So that's the delta above what the standard is. There's a line item on there for facade improvements. So it isn't that we are contributing to the developer to do what they otherwise would have done. The delta would be, or the difference above would be nine hundred thousand dollars to make improvements, so that the building looks and feels more like the rest of the downtown and doesn't just meet downtown design standards. So those are elements that are included in this redevelopment agreement, too.
Okay. And so just to reiterate, that the city is not taking the responsibility or buying these bonds?
No, the five and a half million dollars would be taken out by the developer, and then those funds would then go back and make those types of city improvements.
Dan, do you want to talk a little bit about, part of the use of tax increment financing, if it's above a certain threshold, does go towards affordable housing?
Well, as a matter of fact, that's a good point. So in this agreement, there's seventy-eight, I think, roughly, but I think it's seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars. So on a five and a half million dollar investment, what we do is we charge TIF administration fee. TIF admin fee has a sliding scale, but in this particular project, it's seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars. What does that mean? That's a way for us to recover the amount of time and investment that we put into working with developers. But this council many years ago said that within the biennium, that the biennium would only allow two hundred thousand dollars to go towards the general fund. Any amount that comes in from the TIF admin fee, over and above that amount, then flows into a CIP item, which is for affordable housing. So last year, we concluded, the first year of the biennium, and we concluded that with an amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We were already sixty-eight thousand dollars above the two hundred thousand dollar threshold. So it's my expectation that all the dollars that come in from TIF projects this year, whether it's the hotel project that we did earlier, or this particular project, will go into the CIP to pay for future affordable housing projects. And as an example of one of the things that we did, this body voted on Block Four to provide, I think the number is forty-three, affordable housing units over on Block Four. Some of those funds were used for that purpose. South of downtown, it was a demoing building over on 11th and E Street. We've used those funds to help pay for the demolition over, for south of downtown. So TIF admin fees that come in above two hundred thousand dollars, which we've already accomplished, will go towards the CIP item for affordable housing.
Are there any other questions for Dan? Any other comments?
One quick comment. I agree with my colleagues that we're kind of at the tipping point a little bit with this type of use. But I disagree that this is an area that truly is blighted and really does need the help. And if someone wants to come in and redevelop an area like this one, I think that would be something that would be good for the city.
And my final thought is, I do want to thank my colleagues. We have to keep affordable housing first and foremost, because we know, we hear, it's undeniable that it is a tremendous need in our community. And I think certainly we want to continue to use tax increment financing as a great economic development tool for areas that are blighted. And this is an area that needs a lot of attention, and it's part of our corridor that many guests who visit our city on, for many football Saturdays, but otherwise, it's something that they see. And I think this development is something that we can be proud of. I do want to be an advocate, and I know we have lots of advocates up here for continuing to find other alternatives and solutions to create more economic tools for growing the development base for affordable housing. So it's a very important issue, but also addressing blighted areas. And being able to siphon off some of that tax increment financing for affordable housing is a good process. So please call the roll on this item.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Motion carried five to two. Next is 7K, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Campion Housing Redevelopment in an amount not to exceed five and a half million dollars, introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next is item 7L, Street and Alley Vacation 19006, application of M Street Development to vacate the north one hundred forty-two feet of the alley adjacent to the property generally located between 9th and 10th Streets and M and L Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Washington, seconded by Christiansen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
My name is Garrett Isaw. I live at thirty-three forty-four South Street. I wanted to address the city council. I know this is something that's come up recently in the past, so probably, I don't know how soon it'll come up again. But just a concern as a citizen here of the city of Lincoln, I really appreciate the diversity of Lincoln. It's a great community. And we just have a fantastic population here. I personally, I really enjoy the access to the diversity of different cultural experiences, such as markets that sell things that are imported in from other areas, and the different conversations I get to have with these people. And one of the things I found that I think in Lincoln is kind of a difficult thing is, we recently had a new hookah lounge open up here on O Street, near Sixteenth and O area. And one of kind of the distressing things that I've come across in talking with people is our ordinance regarding the requirement for selling alcohol, for having a liquor license in order to have indoor smoking. I find this to be upsetting for a couple of reasons. One is, it seems to me to encourage that, this idea that, for some reason, we have to have smoking and drinking together. And in general, I mean, it's like, we already have one unhealthy thing. You know, let's have, let's have two unhealthy things. You know, it seems, it seems a bit over the top. The other part that's concerning is potential religious exceptions. I know in certain other faiths that alcohol is prohibited. And part of, part of the cultural landscape of some of that stuff, for example, with hookahs and shisha, tobacco, it's a major part of Middle Eastern culture. And so when we're talking about like, people more of the Islamic faith, not being really, alcohol being kind of not so much a part of that, the requirement is actually a real hardship on business owners of businesses like this. Because on one hand, you have the hookah and the shisha being a huge part of the culture and a really big part of that diversity. But on the other hand, with the requirement of alcohol, it also really eats into, you know, some of that conflict between feeling like you want to provide a big part of your culture, along with also needing to, in order to meet that, is to also have alcohol, which is something that is not really part of the situation. And so I just wanted to address that. I don't know how soon anything can be done about that, but it's something that does affect me and bother me a little bit. And with that, I'll yield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Isaw. Any questions for Mr. Isaw? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment?
Thank you for saying public comment.
I have copies of what I'm going to say.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Hogle, and I'm here representing AAA Ultimate Pawn today. What we're coming forward to do is ask that we be allowed to open on Sundays. Currently, the code 5.34, which regulates pawn, the section 5.34.80 states that the time between twelve midnight Saturday and twelve midnight Sunday shall not be considered an enforcement of this chapter. No shall any property be received as pledged or purchased by any dealer mentioned in this chapter between these hours. We would like this section to be removed. As you probably know, the original code's initiated in nineteen thirty-six. Many businesses had the same laws enforced, and over the years, they came forward and asked that that section be removed regarding them, or pertaining to them. We're asking that that section gets removed regarding pawn. Originally, in two thousand seventeen, the owner, Trina Thomas, had reached out to Tanya Peters, the Assistant City Attorney, and asked about the Sunday issue and also the use of Leads Online. Leads Online, it's an electronic transfer of all pawn transactions to LPD at the end of each day. At that time, Tanya Peters stated that she wanted them to be changed at the same time, the issue to be addressed together. In two thousand eighteen of October, LPD presented the use of Leads Online to all pawn holders and to secondhand dealer holders, gave a training on it and the use of it. Since then, all major pawn locations have been using Leads Online. From our understanding, the secondhand dealers, the permits that the businesses, for those, not everybody is still using that as, I know as of about six months ago. I'm not sure where the city stands on that. But when we're continuing to follow up on the city code with this, we just continue to be told that we're waiting on all active businesses use Leads Online. However, all pawn permit holders or active pawn businesses have been using Leads Online since October of two thousand eighteen. So at this point, we're asking that the businesses holding a pawn permit and using the Leads Online software be allowed to be open on Sundays, or any other provision that can be done to allow some ordinance change.
Are there any questions from Ms. Hogle?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So what did pawn shops do before the Leads Online program?
So before Leads Online, a ticket would be filled out for every item that comes in, and it was either done by hand or through the computer system. And then that ticket was physically printed out, and then they were hand-delivered to LPD the following day by noon. And then someone at LPD would manually enter all that data into a database. So Leads Online now automatically compiles all of our stuff together through the software, and then at the end of each night, it automatically gets transferred to LPD.
And is there a cost to you to have that software?
The city paid for Leads Online itself. The business owners do have to provide two different, different equipment. Their minimal cost, it's a fingerprint scanner and a signature pad, is the only cost that the business incurs for using it.
And then I think my last question is, are other stores allowed to be open on Sundays, like gun stores, or...
Yeah, any product that we take in, all other retail stores are able to be open, sell it, whatever the case is. So any items that we take in, to our knowledge, there's no other businesses that are not allowed to permit that on Sundays.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I guess you're suggesting a really simple compromise. You may have a pawn permit, but if you don't have Leads Online, you can't open on Sunday. Is that it?
Correct. Yep, that's anything. Yep, anything. Just to be able to open on Sundays, but that was the best that we could.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak during public comment?
Madam Chair, seeing no one, I'd like to say, remember the golden rule, and I move adjournment.
Is there a second to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Washington. Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.